Test, test. Wow. Good evening, everyone. We're like a bunch of kids with a new toy up here. We have waited many, many years for a new AV system. And at least on our end, it's a lot better. One thing, I'm not talking so close to the mic, you can't hear me out there in the crowd. But we hope that the folks that are watching us at home can see and hear us a lot better than they have been able to for as long as Danny and I can remember, anyway.
Where's your mic? I don't even see it.
It's magic.
You got it magically pinned to you.
Yeah, it's magic. So, thank y'all for being here on a wet and rainy night here in Georgia. I'll call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM, November 13th, 2018. We'll have our invocation by Councilmember Leslie McPherson. And then we'll have our pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
We thank you for this day, Lord, and we thank you for rain, too. And we just ask a special protection blessing on so many people who've lost their homes, drowning, both the Panhandle and out on the west coast from the fires, Lord. Would you just send helpers, individuals that will come as angels to assist them, Jamie, and help them get through these difficult times? Lord, as we go through our agenda, just guide us, help us to use wisdom as we make decisions to the taxpayers' money, and help us fully to remain civil no matter our disagreements, Lord, in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The rest, I was going to get the tail mic.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, before we proceed with our ceremonial presentations, I just want to step out just a little bit here and ask that all of our veterans that are in the crowd, please stand, if y'all would, and be recognized. It goes without saying that we wouldn't be here tonight if it wasn't for y'all. We thank you for your service to this country. And just anything that we can ever do as a city to be of help to you, please let us know. So, with that, we have two ceremonial presentations here tonight. The first is somewhat of a, it's a good day and it's a bad day. It's a good day because we're getting to see, I mean, Commissioner Vicki Anderson come, and she's going to present a check here in just a few minutes. But before she does that, I want to personally thank her for the time that she's spent on the Carroll County Commission, and personally as a friend, the times that we've had discussions, and she's helped me out with issues, and hopefully I'll have you, too. And we're going to miss you at the Carroll County level, and certainly in Villarica. So, thank you for everything you do. Please give her a hand. Ms. Vicki, if you'll come forward at this time. We even have a microphone that you can use that works.
And...
I think it's on.
Hello?
Yeah.
In leaving Villarica, I just want to tell you how much I've enjoyed for the past 12 years, and it's really, it's gone by fast. But I'll enjoy the freedom also. So, anyway, in leaving, there is one thing that I really noticed about Villarica and what the chief had been trying to do, and how important body cameras and things like that was. So, I had a little money that was assigned to me to spend in my district. And so, we're giving the police department of the City of Villarica, I think it's $57,674 or something like that, dollars, and to be used for an Explorer SUV, 18 body cameras, and a laptop for the cruiser. So...
Chief?
Put this in the picture. So, just shake my hand, let's do that.
Are we in right there? Yeah, I made it, I made it.
I didn't do it.
It's a former microphone. Jeff, you want to come back?
We have a good supply of mics.
I'll pick up the microphone.
Should we charge that to...
Check if you want to.
Can we charge that to your department, Chief?
Thank you, thank you.
You can move, too.
I put my fake check back there. Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank y'all.
We are going to miss you.
Help me.
Mr. Mayor, can I do one more thing?
You certainly may.
I had, I had this hat from Miss Shirley that only she would enjoy this hat.
Wow.
It was for a derby thing, it's brand new.
We don't get one?
It's not me. So, I'll give that to you, Miss Shirley. You look beautiful in the hat.
That'd make a nice fishing hat, by the way.
Is she allowed to accept that gift?
She just has the claim.
Our second ceremonial presentation, I want to give this person some his due respect, and most of you don't know this guy. And I laid eyes on him for the first time tonight, but I felt like I know him. I've known him now for how long, 10 years it seems like? Actually, since I've been the mayor, in particular, the last probably 12 months, 16 months. But Connor Poe is with Norfolk Southern. And soon y'all will go, "Oh, so that's the guy." So, if y'all remember, we've been having train issues here for some time now. And when I would get the calls and the, you know, little reports on Facebook, I would always say, "Okay, I'll take care of it." And the way I would take care of it was by texting, in most cases, Connor Poe with Norfolk Southern. And I found out really quick that Connor was the answer that I had prayed for, because in the past, when I would call, you know, you'd get the operator, you may not get the operator, or get on hold. And there was not a time that I called Connor Poe with Norfolk Southern and said, "I've got a problem, can you take care of it?" And even if he couldn't take care of it, and sometimes he couldn't, but even when he could not take care of the problem, he always said, "Look, it's going to be a day, it's going to be an hour, it's going to be 30 minutes." And he would follow up, and he would follow up until the train was moved. And he asked me before the meeting, he said, "Are things better?" And I think everybody would agree they're a lot better in Villarica. The last problem I had with him was about a week ago, and it was regarding a Amtrak train. And he was telling me earlier that Amtrak trains can be as much as 10 hours behind, so that plays havoc with their freight lines. So, but Connor, I want to ask you to come up, and I'm going to come down and get my picture taken with you. And also, I got to meet Ms. Anna Lanier Fisher. She's the manager with Government and Community Affairs. And so, he told me, "If you can't get me, because I'm going to be down at the legislative group of folks down at the Capitol, then you call her." So, I don't know what that means, Anna, I'm just telling you, he probably set you up. So, trains may get worse now, but please come up, and we're going to give you a microphone and let you...
Chief.
Here you go. Would you like to say something?
Yes.
I think the chief hit the lottery tonight, I guess, you know?
Once in a lifetime, chief. Once in a lifetime.
Connor Poe, good to see you. Yes, sir. Well, I just want to, you know, we have a local discretionary program in our company where we try to help out cities and counties. And I usually try to put my focus around Georgia on public safety. And because we know our mission of our railroad is safety's number one for us. And you guys know with a railroad right here, safety's very important with folks crossing the tracks and everything else. I want to introduce Dee Pearson, who is our special agent in charge. Dee is a very close, very close to you guys. He's just over the line here in Temple, just down the road, so I wanted to make sure he was here today. But Dee's the one that gets the calls when there's trespassers, when there's folks trying to ride on the train. He's seen it all. He's seen it all. He's actually retired, you don't know this. He's retired police officer from Chattanooga. So, this is his retirement working for Norfolk Southern as a railroad, as a rail cop. So, but no, I appreciate, where's the mayor? Mayor, you've been great. The problems, I think we're getting better. We're going to have problems forever, but you know what? You and I've got a good relationship. Tom and I've got a great relationship. I think that we'll find a way to work together. We're married, whether we like it or not, and you know, we're going to make this marriage work, and we're going to figure it out. But tonight, we have a, I got $5,000 for the chief tonight to spend on, I think, body cameras as well. This money does not just come from Georgia, this actually comes from Alabama as well. As you guys know, you are on the, you are right where the mark is between the Alabama Division, which is our folks over in Alabama, and then our folks in Atlanta. So, we actually got $2,500 from Alabama, $2,500 from Georgia, and put that money together for this tonight. So, this is the most that we give for local discretionary grants. I wish we could do more, and we will do more in the future for you, Mayor, because we know what an important area this is for the railroad. We go back a long way with y'all. And we want to be good stewards of y'all's community. So, Dee, if you want to present the check to the chief?
Thank you, sir.
Now, Mayor, you can't use this money on a debt finder.
I've got one.
One thing about Chief, he's got one of the best chiefs around, I've known him for longer than I care to remember. But the one thing I always know is he's got a lot of integrity, he's well-respecting his community, he's well-respected in law enforcement in Villarica. So, y'all are lucky to have him.
Amen.
That's true. Thank you.
Y'all just don't know the number of times that I've called Connor, texted Connor, and he said, "Look, I'm on vacation, I'm wherever in the Bahamas," and wherever. And he would say, "Okay, I'll handle it." So, thank you again.
He never replies to my texts when he's...
Thank you again.
See y'all.
Good times, good folks. We have one more thing for Chief tonight. I'm just kidding. Okay, adoption of agenda. Hopefully, you all have had a chance to look at your agendas, and I would entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda as written.
So, move.
Have a motion to approve?
Say it.
And with a second. All in favor? All in favor of the agenda as written?
Yes.
It is unanimous.
IT assistance over here.
Okay. We have reached the public comment portion of our meeting. Anyone wishing to give public comment, please do so at this time. State your name and record for the, name and address for the record, and please limit your remarks to three minutes.
Nancy Mims, 17 degrees here, Villarica, Georgia. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I have been coming to city council meetings for exactly one year this week. And I'm coming not only as a commissioner for historic preservation, but as a citizen. And tonight, I'm really here to thank one particular part of this. I've come to the city council meetings to support our city council members, to learn more about the budget, thanks to Sarah's PowerPoints, to know that there is a juxtaposition between the departments. But what I have not heard at all is a thank you for the police department and for the programs that they sponsor. And I am, probably with many others in here, one of the proud graduates of the police academy. I also had an opportunity to ride on a ride-along with Officer Waldo. And I want you to know that even though I hear the budget, and I hear what we're doing, and we're presenting all of these wonderful things to everyone, that until you're actually attending one of those commission meetings, or academy meetings, and you understand the training that our officers have gone through. I myself have come from an attorney slash police background. My own father was chief of police. All I knew about police work was to be good and behave myself, but times have changed since the 50s. And what I learned from this academy, and what I learned on the ride-along, means that I could actually support even more money than what was being given to them tonight. They're wonderful, I want to endorse them, I want to thank them, and I want you to know that most of our officers are also veterans and very apropos for this week. So, thank you to the police department. I'm really very proud of all of them, and I'm proud to be a citizen of Villarica. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jim, can you check that level? Jim, can you turn the sound down just a little bit? It seemed to be, I don't know how, maybe it's just me, is it loud to everybody?
Well, she was on top of it.
Go ahead, ma'am, I'm sorry.
My name is Shirley Hillsman, and I'm coming with a concern and a question that I can't seem to get an answer to. I've been to the City Hall, and I've been to council member, and I've been up here to this meeting last month, and trying to find out, and I still ain't got an answer. There's some surveyors been up in our neighborhood for the last couple of months, I've seen them the last couple of months, I don't know, they ain't seen them since the 24th of this last month. And they're doing measurements and stuff, and when I got a close chance to approach one of them, they said they were working for the city. But what's going on?
What was the person's name?
I don't know the name, but they were surveyors, and they had these little cameras and these little measures, and they measured personal property over on Darden Street. And they said, and for a minute, they were working for the city. But I can't get an answer from the city, I don't know.
If you can give us his name, or was there a name on the vehicle? Did he have a business card? Or, I mean, we don't have anybody working on Darden Street doing, so...
Not that I'm aware of.
They've just been over there, and they've been doing a whole lot of measures and stuff. And when I tried to get an answer to the question, I ain't got none. I even went to City Hall, and I've been up here last month, and I still ain't got no answer to that.
Do me a favor. There should be a business card. If not, I'll get your number. Next time you see somebody over there, if you will, give me a call on my cellphone, and I'll see if I can find out who it is.
We'll get a picture of him and find out.
Yeah, like I said, it's just a question of concern. I don't know if I say anything to worry about or not, but I want no answer.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Wesley Whitehouse, 635 South Street, Apartment 8. Either last month or the month before, y'all had a representative from the high school in this council meeting, talking about safety of our children. I'm going to talk about safety on South Street, and as well as flooding issues on South Street. It doesn't happen that much, but we have speeders on South Street that happens at least once a week. We have signs on each end of South Street that says "Children at Play," but these speeders does not pay no attention to those signs. They're going, they're speeding, the speed limit signs are 25, and they're going 60 miles an hour down these roads or up it. And I just need somebody to do something about it before one of our children, either in Apartment 4 or Apartment 6, gets hit. And I'm talking about young children that are less than school age.
Right, sir. Anybody else? Seeing none, we will go to council updates. I'll report that Councilman McDougal and myself attended a meeting with Chairperson Jones and Chairperson Guider, I mean, Commissioner Guider, today over in Douglas County. And it was a very productive meeting, I felt. And so, those meetings go on quarterly, that's with our Douglas County Board of Commissioners. And thankfully, since we've changed our meeting nights now, we'll be able to attend some of the meetings with Carroll County. And I think that's important. And Commissioner Anderson has always pointed that out, that we needed to be more visible at those meetings. So, now we'll be able to do that. So, any other things that y'all would like to report?
Just real quick, still, the truck's on Punkin Town. I'd like to see what we're going to actually do to solve the problem, since we're aware it's there. We did have another one that got stuck off the road at Old Stone in Punkin Town, blocked the road. I don't think they took out the light pole this time. But I've been told by one of the constituent, one of my constituents, that there's some other areas where there aren't signs to go down behind the hospital. So, once they go that way, they have to get on Punkin Town. So, maybe we need to look at other roads that they're feeding in on. But even more so right now, something that's ugly head has arisen again, is our parking downtown, which we're glad that we have people downtown, and, but we have an issue with, I guess what I would call courtesy. And it has to do with employees at businesses parking all day in front of businesses, which makes it hard if you have retail down there and all the spaces are gone in front by people who are staying all day. We have signs down there with two-hour limited, so we've got to get back on that. We're probably going to need a merchant meeting. Hopefully, Main Street will handle something like that. And Chief with the enforcement, those cars aren't supposed to be there more than two hours in that area, and that's not what's going on. So, it kind of fixed itself for a while, but you know how it is, right? Sometimes, well, it's back like it was, it's bad again.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move into Table A of our meeting, and that would be approval of the, Table A1 is approval of minutes. Councilmembers, you have the minutes from the October the 9th, 2018, as well as the October 23rd, 2018, meetings. I would entertain a motion to either amend or approve.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for October 9, 2018, and October 23, 2018.
Motion seconded by Councilmember Carter. All in favor? Unanimous. Item number two, proposed 2019 council meetings.
You have in front of you the proposed 2019 council meetings. As you recall, back in September, you all voted to go to two meetings per month, the 2nd and 4th Tuesday, with no work session. If you'll take a look at the proposed meetings for next year, we do have the Tuesday, January 22nd meeting canceled, and that is because we do have two council members that will be out of town, so that will leave us with no quorum. And also, at the end of the year, Tuesday, December 24th, is Christmas Eve, so we didn't think you wanted to have a council meeting on Christmas Eve. So, we have canceled that one as well. So, that is your list of proposed meetings for next year.
I guess we're not going to discuss it, so I'll make a motion to approve the proposed 2019 council meeting schedule.
Motion is seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Item number four, Villarica fee schedule.
Oh, you skipped one. Holiday schedule.
The holiday schedule.
Number three. What did we just do? Oh, I was right, that's a council meeting. Okay, my bad.
So, you will have before you this time, the proposed holiday schedule. Staff would like to keep the same holiday schedule that we normally have for the city, and you will see that on the second page of your proposal. But it starts with New Year's Day. I won't go through all of them, but it's the same holidays. There's only one holiday that the city does not take, and that is Columbus Day, and that is in the month of October.
That's not traditionally observed by this city, right? Has not been.
That's the way, when I got here four years ago, I was told that the reason why the city chose not to have that holiday is so that we could have two days off for Thanksgiving. I'm not sure if that was voted by the council, but that was what I was told.
Sounds a little odd.
Yeah, I think we had...
I think the post office is closed.
I think we had 12 holidays, and they spread them out where they wanted them.
I'm comfortable with the schedule that we've had, so I'll make a motion to approve the proposed 2019 holiday schedule.
Okay.
Multiple seconds. Okay, all in favor? Approved.
Now, we'll take a look at the fee schedule. The purpose of the fee schedule is to put together a citywide listing of all the fees into one document. Previous, well, currently, you can find all the department's fee schedule on various pages on the city's website. So, if a staff person, or you, or anybody in the public wanted to look at all the fees, they may have a difficult time trying to find these. So, and there, a lot of cities do have this on one document. Once this is approved, we will post it on the website under the new tab at the top at the far right that says "I want to." It will be in that section. And also, if the department heads want to post this on their page, it will be out there also. This will be a lot easier to find, and it's all in one document. So, does anyone have any questions on that?
I got one question. I noticed when I went through it that the notary fee at the City Hall is $2 a page, but the police department's charging $3 a page.
Yeah, we were going to chat with you, David Macklin. Is my understanding that $2 is the max that we can charge?
I think that's right.
Okay, so I will need to go in and change the police department's to $2.
Yeah, I think state law mandates that, correct, $2?
I've never seen this charged either. I know that fees there, but I've seen these all the time that are charged either.
This is another one of those items. I didn't hear the rest of it, because I, this is another one of those items that we've created that I sit back and wonder why we never had this to begin with. I mean, how is it possible that nobody ever thought, put all this in one document? So, I think it's a great idea. None of the fees, as a part of what we're doing tonight, have been changed, though, right? This is just bringing them all together in one document.
This is just bringing them all together. This includes Bobby's new solid waste fees. It does include that.
Right. Okay, so I would make a motion to approve the City of Villarica fee schedule dated November 1, 2018.
Motion is seconded. I do have something that I want to discuss. I want us to seriously look this year at the need for having three fees for sports in our rec. department. I don't want all the way by it, but we have a city fee, and then we have a county fee, and then we have an out-of-county fee. And I'm not, I'm not going to, well, y'all know how I feel about it. I was, I was going to say, I'm not going to tip my hand, but you know how I feel about that. I want us to just look at that and see what the impact of not charging the county fee would be. I understand the necessity of charging an out-of-county fee, but I'm not, you can sit in the stadium at Villarica High School and watch people in Villarica unincorporated. Those kids that go to that high school are Villarica kids, and they play in our sports program. And I just want us to look at that and see what the impact of that would be, you know, pro and con, and then come up with a way to look at that, looking forward, moving forward. Any other discussion?
I would just say that, because I'm willing to look at all of it, but just remember that it's everybody that lives within the city that pays all the taxes, that those fields exist, the programs exist, all that. But we do get something from the county, a certain amount from the county for each one of the county kids that participate that aren't in city limits. So, I'd be willing to look at all of it.
We do get a reimbursement from Carroll County, thanks to Commissioner Anderson, who pushed for that. And this year, the service delivery agreement was changed. After I tried for years to do that, it does include soccer now. After I tried for years to do that, it does include soccer now for the first time, so thank you for that. All in favor?
Well, let me just say, although that's not the question, what you brought up here, just for purposes of understanding where we all are on this, I would say, I'm willing to look at that as well. And there might be one way to look at it. Maybe you could be a city of Villarica resident, or attend one of the schools in the City of Villarica. But that'd be something to think about.
Any other discussion? Not all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you all for doing that. As Councilmember Dougle said, this is one of those things you're like, wow, we never had that in the past, so this is great. Item number five, Ward Two qualifying dates and early voting dates.
Okay, last but not least, you have before you our proposed qualifying dates and early voting dates, and this is for Ward Two, our special election that would be held Tuesday, March the 19th. This is to fill the seat that Councilman Berlin Best resigned from back in September, I believe. I have discussed back and forth with election supervisor Greg Rigby and our city attorney. They're both okay with the dates. We did have some changes today, so especially on the early voting dates, the places on that, but I'll go over that in just a minute. Qualifying dates, we have, it's two and a half days. Those will be at City Hall. As you can remember, last year, the county wanted the city clerks of each city to do the qualifying. I do have a backup for that, just in case, you know, I'm out for any reason. That's Katie Goffrey. She's trained to do that. But the qualifying dates will be Monday, January the 7th, Tuesday, January the 8th, and Wednesday, January the 9th. It'll be 8:00 to 5:00 on Monday and Tuesday, and 8:00 to 12:00 on Wednesday. Anybody in that Ward Two that wants to qualify, when you come to City Hall, I will have the entire packet there for you, even the ethic forms that you have to fill out and file with the state. So, we take care of it, all of it, at City Hall. But that is January the 7th through January the 9th. And also, keep in mind, City of Temple's got the same thing going on, like we with one of their councilmen.
So, we're sharing the cost, is it?
Some of the cost.
Right.
How much is a qualifying fee?
And we got that today.
How much is a qualifying fee?
I believe it was...
Seventy-two dollars.
Seventy-two. I was about to say seventy-five, so I was close. It's seventy-two.
Okay, because part of what we're going to approve tonight is, would include the qualifying fees, right? And that's not here.
It is not, and in fact, I have drawn up the call for the election to be brought at the next meeting, but essentially, all of the information is here. So, I would propose not only are you, that you not only approve the dates, but that you go ahead and vote, and you issue the call for the election, to allow the mayor to approve the call for the election tonight, 'cause you've got all the information here, so I don't know that it needs to wait.
Do you have that, or we can read it into the...
Or maybe you could help us with it when we get ready for the motion.
Do you wanna do that, David, or do you wanna disable this and do yours?
I think it would be better to go ahead and get it done. The quicker we can get it to the election superintendent...
Yes, we need to get the dates approved, yes.
The better off he is in getting it formatted, so...
Do we need to approve the $72 explicitly, or is it a rollover from the past?
It is established by law, but yeah, if we get ready to make the motion, I'd be glad to stake the motion that we voted on tonight in order to facilitate it.
Just as a matter of clarification, in this cover sheet, it says the initial quote that was given to us for the election was $9,330. Then says that the quote received on November 13th was $6,530. Are these numbers after the sharing cost with Temple, or before?
This is after. I got a updated quote from Greg Rigby today. I asked for it last week and didn't get it, so I called him back today. Some of the fees are shared with City of Temple, and some are not. I've got that, but unfortunately, I didn't have time to attach it. So, the quote, instead of the last quote for $9,330, is $6,530.
So, the cost to the City of Villarica for this is $6,530?
That's correct.
Okay.
The big difference would be sharing the cost with Temple for the early voting.
Two weeks of early voting.
Two weeks of early voting, but we have to pay for our own precinct, 'cause we don't share precincts with them.
So, we're paying for one, all of one, the third week of early voting, and then the election day.
And the third week is at Powell Park, and the one and two are at Carroll County Courthouse?
Which we're sharing.
We're gonna share that, right?
But that's the shared component.
Okay.
Yeah, the early voting dates, you know, it's required, we have to have three weeks. So, the first week's February 25th through March the 1st, from 8:00 to 6:00 o'clock. That will be at the Carroll County Election Office in Carrollton. Week two, March the 4th through the 8th, same date and same place. And then the third week will be here in Villarica, Powell Park, March the 11th through the 15th, from 8:00 to 6:00.
Is this normally, I thought it was normally 7:00 to 7:00? 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM?
On election day.
This is what he gave me.
It's usually 7:00 to 7:00.
Yeah, I will verify that.
Okay.
Yeah, it is 7:00 o'clock on election, yes. I'll verify that with him, but this is what was given to me.
It's always, I think it's always 7:00 to 7:00.
It's required by state law, it's 7:00 to 7:00 on election day.
Yeah, okay.
And I also found...
Oh, there we go. I was curious as to, why the heck do we have to have three whole weeks to get one, you know, council seat filled? But it's state law, we have to do it, at least for now, unless that law changes it sometime. But think of how expensive that gets, for how that adds to the cost, and we are paying people to be over there all day. Some of the people are volunteers.
That's the majority of the $6,500. It's about twenty...
To have three weeks.
Twenty-four hundred dollars a week, per week, for the two weeks, so forty-eight of the sixty-five.
You're required to have three people present for the early voting.
Let me just clarify. On the early votes, it's from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. You are sure...
That's what I was told, but I am gonna verify that with him tomorrow to make sure.
That's what it was for this last election.
Yes, it was for the last election, the early voting was, the same.
For the early voting?
Wait.
I'm gonna leave it to you. I just don't want the public to have bad information, and we're sitting here talking about it.
No, I'll verify before we release it out to the public. We'll verify and make sure that's correct, before we post it anyway.
And verify it to that gentleman behind you there.
Then it gets confusing for...
Okay, I'm ready. I'll make a motion to approve the qualifying dates. Let me let David make the motion, because of the qualifying fee.
I was gonna say that the motion should be to call for a special election to fill the vacancy on, in Ward Two, and that election to be held on March 19th, 2019, with the qualifying dates, the early voting dates, as presented to the council in the agenda item cover sheet, and with a qualifying fee of $72.
That's my motion.
What are questions? Do I have a second?
Sir.
You did.
Motion is seconded. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Alisa. Tab B, Sarah.
Good evening.
Evening.
Okay, so, I think this may have been 2006, David. I don't know if you know any more information. The City of Rome started a lawsuit, turned into a class action lawsuit with all the cities and counties in Georgia, or the ones that chose to participate, against Hotels.com and other online travel companies for the hotel tax that was not being remitted. So, this firm, let me see the name, Brinson, Askew, Barry, Siegler, Richardson, and Davis, have been collecting and distributing this motel, hotel motel tax from these online companies. So, I don't know how long they've been doing it for Villarica, probably this whole time, so that would be over 10 years, I believe. And like I said, it looks like they're doing it for all the cities and counties that have participated. So, they sent us a new agreement to continue, if we'd like to, continue with the administration of this. I went back and looked, we get 200 to 400 every quarter. It's not bringing in a ton of money for us. So, my recommendation would be to continue on with the administration being handled by them for this lawsuit, collection of this hotel tax.
How much are they getting?
They get 12 and a half percent.
Of what they collect, and then they remit that to the city?
Correct.
That sounds fair to me.
Yep. I'll entertain a motion. Make a motion to approve the continuation of administration handled by Jay Anderson, Davis of Brinson, Askew, Barry, Siegler, Richardson, and Davis LLP for the collection hotel motel tax from various online travel companies.
Second.
Have a motion is seconded. Any discussion? Not all in favor? Unanimous. Number two?
Item number two is to write off uncollectible customer accounts. This was brought to y'all in February of this year. The council approved writing off, I think it was over 600 accounts worth $95,000. Those were accounts that ranged from 2015 to 2017. So, this is now, since that time, these are accounts that are, have been deemed uncollectible since November of 2017 through September of 2018. There are 202 accounts totaling $31,850. When we talked about this back in February, we talked about how the things that we do in-house will have a greater impact than, for instance, sending accounts to collections. And the council has allowed us to start on some of those things. So, the first one we did was cycle billing. We started that in October of 2017. We moved to four cycled due dates, excuse me. So, now, every week, the staff is reading the meters, every week, we have due dates, every week, we're cutting off. So, we spread out the workload, but we've also allowed ourselves now to have a better handle on when we're cutting people off. That was part of it. The council allowed us to, instead of waiting two to three months to cut folks off for non-payment, I think we thought we were extending them grace, but what we were doing was making it harder to collect, 'cause now they owe 300-plus. So, the council voted to allow us to shorten that time when we cut off. So, now, we cut off after one bill has not been paid. And we've seen increased collection with that. Another big thing was we changed the deposit amount. We separated homeowners versus renters, so now the renters paid a positive 175. But that didn't take effect until April of 2018, so, you know, it hasn't even been a year yet. So, I don't, you know, it may not be until this time next year where we see really the impact of that. So, I, you know, I was surprised that it was still this much, but again, I think with the things that we've put into place, I'm hoping next year will look a lot better. So, this is, again, 202 accounts totaling $31,850.19 for the council to authorize staff to write those off.
So, what you're saying is that these accounts were already in service before we raised the deposit amount?
In service and finalled. So, these accounts finalled all the way back to November of 2017. But when I brought this to you in February, that felt too soon to write those off yet, but now it's been a year.
So, it should look better next year.
They go back to November 2017.
Correct.
How far do they, did you say October?
I brought them through the end of September.
The end of September?
Yes.
And these are accounts that folks have moved away, they owe us money, we can't find them, we've tried.
Correct.
How have we tried?
We send them a final bill, and then we also, we send to collections, but like we talked about before, the greater impact is what we do in-house. I mean, we don't see a huge return through the collections.
So, you talked about things that we put in place to preemptively target these bad debts, but at that time, we also talked about other actions that we would take to collect on bad debts once we have them. Looks like to me that we're 11 months into this, and we're just, we wanna just write them off, we've done nothing else to collect on that?
We're still sending to collections, but, I mean, we're dealing with, people give us, if they give us a final address, you know, a lot of times, bills are coming back to us. The collection agency, like I said, I'm not getting much return on those. So, if they're getting anything, that's the low-hanging fruit, the people that are scared of having it on their credit. I mean, they're the ones who are gonna turn around and pay, but the people who aren't, they're not gonna pay, just at the threat of having it on their credit report.
Are you selling these off to a collection agency? Are we collecting anything upfront to do that?
We send the names, we try to send whatever month came through, we send a month at a time, and when they collect, we get 50% of that, so they still get 50% of it.
So, even if we authorize you to write this off, because I'm also concerned that this number is still quite significant, if over a two-year period, it was $95,000, but over an 11-month period, actually, less than that, actually, we're only talking about 10, well, 10 months, we're at 30...
32,000.
32,000. I'm not really seeing much of a difference at all, and I would... Danny said it's possibly some of that stuff was already in the pipe before we started changing some of the deposit, you know, so we may have a more accurate number the next time you come in here.
I believe so. Another thing we run into, I mean, I was, I looked at some of the accounts, some of them are large balances even recently, and what the customers tell us is, I can't get my landlord to fix the leak. So, just this afternoon, I was thinking, I wonder what action we can have towards landlords that aren't taking care of the leaks that are leaving these tenants with leaks that can't be fixed. I mean, we're talking, people rack up hundreds and hundreds of dollars, and we only fix...
And these are verified leaks?
I mean, you can tell when there are water spikes to 30,000 gallons in a month, yeah.
Well, if they're in my ward, call me. I'll call the landlord. I don't care. I mean, people need to take care of stuff like that.
That's an interesting concept. Don't call, don't give them my number. I won't be doing that.
But that was just a question I had this afternoon.
But is the amount we raised in the deposit, is that gonna compensate for some of this in the future?
Yes, if you look at some of these...
A lot of these, some of these are well over, though. $1,200?
Well, it would've helped. Our deposit used to be $100, so now it's 175. Most of these people were probably brought in at the $100 level, so once we applied the deposit, you still have a big balance. You know, 75 extra dollars isn't gonna clear that whole balance, but it would've helped. But again, we've gotten to the point now where we're cutting them off after one bill. Ashley told me this morning that she had some very unhappy customers this morning, 'cause they got the call that they're, would be terminated, and they knew they only owed one bill.
So, after you write these off, though, you're still maintaining these people's names and these amounts that are due if they ever come back to the City of Villarica?
If they ever come back, they sign on for service. We had it happen today. They give us their social, and when we put their social in, if they had an old account, it triggers, it flags the customer service representative. So, we had one today. They owed a balance from a couple of years back, so we made her pay. It was $291, and she paid it.
Can you come back to the council, let's say in six months, and give us an update of how this process is working now that we're 10 months into it?
Sure.
Because we're not left with many choices but to write this off tonight, but I wanna see that things we put in place to mitigate this are actually working.
Is this the math that's shown on here, is this actually after we take out the $100 deposit amount that they put in?
Yes, this is what's left.
This is the reminder.
These are the finals.
The ballots.
Correct. So, to the far right, if you're looking at this spreadsheet, the far, very far two columns, that shows you the date that the account was closed, but the two columns before that, that shows the last time they were paid, that they actually made a payment. So, some of them have large discrepancies. They finalled in September, but their last payment was in May. So, we may have cut them off, 'cause they didn't pay, but this still doesn't make them pay if they have no intention to, or if they've already moved, and we don't know about it.
But because we're addressing it sooner, and the bills go back to last fall, but it wasn't till April that we implemented the higher deposits.
Correct.
This should look a lot better next time.
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I make a motion to authorize staff to write off the 202 uncollectible amounts totaling $31,850.19 as presented.
Do I have a second?
Oh, sorry. Second?
Motion is seconded. All in favor?
Like I say, we had no choice.
It is unanimous. Okay, item number three.
Next, during the audit, when the auditor presented, one of the items that came up was, we had an old fund, Community Green Space Fund. There was $99.84 in that fund that's been there for years, and as far as I can understand, it hasn't been used in many years. So, it seemed like the council's will to go ahead and write that, not write it off, excuse me, but get that out of that fund. So, what we're proposing here is to clear it out of this fund, 'cause in theory, we're supposed to set up a budget and all that every time we have this fund balance rolling. So, this will clear that out and this fund will no longer exist, basically move it to the general fund.
All $99.84, all right.
All $99.
Okay, I'll make that motion to authorize staff to transfer the balance of $99.84 from the Community Green Space Fund to the general fund in the 2018 fiscal year.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Item number four.
The next item has to do with our salary study implementation that we just completed. You know, we asked for a, an exception in the police department with the captains because we had had a, you know, there was some serious compression between where they were compared to the people they are supervising, and I hate to say, we had another one that was not seen until after we got everybody in place, but part of the budget, we approved a promotion for crew leaders in the distribution and collection department, and when those were originally put into the budget, that was before the salary study was done, we kind of had an estimated increase for that promotion. Well, after the salary study went into effect and that department, all the employees that that crew leader would now be supervising, there was no, basically their employees would be making more than the crew leader. So, coming to council to ask that they would allow us to increase the crew leader's salary by 3,000, and with the taxes and the benefits, it would be a total of $3,510.
I think we'll take one of those.
We're just doing one right now.
Is the money available for the second one?
Not yet.
Okay. Explain that to them, because otherwise, if they're going to gig, it's going to come back.
So, we asked for the promotion for two employees. One of them is, hasn't completed the necessary steps in order to become licensed with the distribution lic, collection, distribution license. So, until that happens, he will not qualify for the promotion, and we feel like that'll be later down on the line. So, that person hasn't qualified for the promotion, I'm not coming to you for that money yet. So, this is just for one person, one position.
I was surprised we hadn't seen these earlier, because I expected when we were doing the police department that there would be something in water and sewer, because we had talked about it, but I'm good with this.
Did we account for the one that hasn't been, is not promoted yet, did we count it for that in the budget?
I, I haven't done that one yet, because again, I don't know at what point in the year that would happen, so.
I mean, when we put together our budget for the next year, is this going to happen next year?
Well, we may address that person later on in the year, depending on when they're eligible for the promotion, but it would be the same situation, that additional money to, to give them a higher pay than their employees, that hasn't happened yet.
We'll fix it in the next budget.
In the 2019 budget.
Unless he's promoted, the 2020 budget.
This is fixing the 19.
Yeah, this is 19.
Is this the annual cost?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we're going to make this one retro to October 1?
Correct.
And the other one would be effective when he qualifies, and only for a partial year.
Correct.
So, that doesn't say it on the motion, but that's what you want, retro, retro to October 1?
That's true, yes, please.
Yeah, because the next one says, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the increase in the crew leader position pay, taxes and benefits by $3,510.
Retro.
Retro to October 1.
Retro to October 1.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Item number five.
This is another salary correction, but this was before the, the most recent study. This is to correct the Director of Parks Recreation and Leas, Leisure Services back to January 1 of 2017. So, in April of 2017, council approved pay parity for employees. We had done a matrix, they had, there was a cap of 5% per employee. Basically, we went through every employee, put them on this matrix, and if they were above where there's, where the matrix said they were supposed to be, we removed them from the list. The Director of Parks and Rec was receiving, had received a temporary increase for community development work that she was also doing. So, with that added bump, she was not, she, she was removed from the matrix after we saw that it, her pay was above the, where it was supposed to be. Well, in reality, that the temporary bump should have not been included in that when we did the pay, pay parity calculation. So, I went back and recalculated what the pay should have been with that pay parity, so that was retro back to January 1. She should have gotten a 4.1, 4.11 pay increase to her base pay there, and by doing that, that would have affected any other increases she has gotten since then. So, basically, I think she had a merit at her anniversary date in 2017, as well as, I don't have the details in front of me, as well as this most recent pay study. Basically, it ratcheted up every time, every time she's gotten a pay increase, it should have been higher because of the original one from January 1 of 2017. Staff recommends that we correct the salary, current salary by $3,088.16 effective November 12, and then remit the back pay, which I calculated, including up till the 12th, $5,597.91 for the period, again, from January 1, 2017 to November 11, 2018.
If we voted on that, are we supposed to vote tonight, or this, you just doing some house cleaning?
For this correction?
Right.
Yes, I'm asking for the council.
Can we vote on this, so back in win 5-0? So, would this just be cleaning house, or we got to vote on it again, over the second day?
I'm asking for the council to vote, yes, that we can go ahead and correct the pay now, because it wasn't shown in the budget that we just did, and also to go ahead and cut the check of $5,597.91.
So, why are we voting if we already voted on, that, I mean, I'm not saying don't do it, you know I want to have it, but I'm saying, if it's already voted on, why are we voting on this again?
Well, the reason, as I understand it, it wasn't calculated correctly. So, since it wasn't calculated correctly, then we, the council would have to take action to, to correct what was, what was done.
So, she's fixing a problem.
So, my, my philosophy is, is we mess up and we fix it and don't tell you, that looks a little sneaky.
Oh, no, I'm not saying.
That's a better way to put it.
I'm not saying don't tell us, but I'm saying, if you already voted on, why are we voting again?
Well, I mean, this is just like my way of telling y'all what we did, and y'all's way of telling me, we can still work here.
And don't do it again. Do better. That's your, well, I was trying to.
I was surprised that it took this long to, to catch this.
I mean, I wanted to get it.
Let me, let me make a motion, yeah, I'll make a motion.
We do whatever you say.
Read the motion.
No, I'm, I'm going to object to that motion.
The Director of Parks Recreation and Leisure Services by $3,088.16. It's 16, sent effective November the 12th, 10, 2018, and to remit the back pay of $5,597.91.
All right, second.
Have a motion to second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Tab C, Parks and Recreation.
I have one more.
Got one more, number six.
What do I keep missing?
You want to borrow my glasses, Adam?
I have some 2019 budget amendments. The first two we've just spoken about, the first one, again, being for the change in salary and the back pay for the Director of Parks and Rec. That, the total of those two items is $9,159.73, and so, here we're amending the salaries line item and then offsetting that with building permit revenue. And the second one is for the other salary correction, for the salary study implementation for the crew leader. Again, this increases the salary line item by $3,510 and offsets that with sewer taps. And then the bottom two, this came up, again, after the audit, and they said that we didn't have budgeted, budgets for some of our small funds, which I still don't agree that I want to have a seizure budget, because we don't know how much seizure funds we're going to get, but in order to play along with the state law, I guess. Here are two, this is setting up a budget for the federal seizures and the state seizures funds, I'm just putting in $100 here.
Because we don't know.
Because we don't know.
Well, these are for the budgets, but will you also be maintaining or tracking these funds?
Oh, yeah, we, we track them, but I, I know for sure we've already gotten some state seizure fund money so far this year, federal seizure money, I don't, I don't know where Chief went, but I don't think we've gotten any of that in recent history. So, the fund is maintained, there's a fund balance, there's a, there is a bank balance that has an amount in there, but as far as revenue or expenditure, that is to be seen.
You've got an ordinance attached to this, this requires an ordinance?
To amend the budget, yes.
And it says pursuant to section blank of the city charter, it did have a section in there.
I think I did this to you last time, David.
It would, it would be the section of the city charter that requires us to maintain a balanced budget.
Don't you think we should, don't you think we should add that in there?
It's in there somewhere.
After 28 years, you can't just quote that?
I'm surprised when we created this ordinance, we didn't look that up. I would think we need that in it.
Questions?
Well, there's no motion in here, is that what we're waiting on? There's no motion written in here.
Now, there's an ordinance to be approved, but I don't think it's a complete ordinance. It's missing some information. Is this something that needs to be done at this meeting?
It can wait.
It can wait, but you could also solve that problem simply by changing the title, by saying an ordinance to approve an amendment to the budget, period. All the rest of that is just surplusage.
Amendment to the budget, pursuant to her.
If we don't, if we, if we table this, will this delay these checks that, that, because part of this budget amendment is the money that we just.
You already approved it.
Okay, so, I, I'll make a motion to table this ordinance to the next meeting.
All right.
I'll second that, we need it completed.
Motion to second to table, all in favor? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Tab C, Parks and Recreation, Vicki.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This first item that is before you, this is concerning the, the lights at Goldust Park that's surrounding the tennis courts. It, as part of the budget, this was an item that was included as one of the capital projects. There's been a bit of discussion, I think, one or two meetings earlier in the year, just to talk about, these are original wooden poles that surround the tennis courts. We happened to do construction last year, but we didn't put as part of the construction in the budget to change out those poles. Those poles essentially, they deteriorate over time, and certainly, Mayor, I know you mentioned, you asked me about inspections, I can't say that we've been on top of inspections since we've been there, but these poles appear to be the original poles, again, from when the courts were originally constructed, so, part of what you'll see, not only in this particular item, but as Goldust continues to change, is the conversion of a lot of those poles that exist now, for them to be converted to the concrete poles that you're going to see as included in this item. The amount that's proposed is $18,079. This was a budgeted item, and this is to be paid for with splosh dollars.
How many poles are we talking about here?
This is, I believe it's a total of four poles.
It was your opinion that it's a safety issue, correct?
It is a safety issue. Again, they deteriorate over time with, with water damage and any other thing, and there really is, as I started to go in and do a little bit more research, there's, you know, every so many years, there's, you're checking for the extent of the, the.
20 years.
Yeah, you're checking for the extent of the damage, it's not something that you can put off, but, so this is really the best way to us to mitigate a lot of those issues that are going to come up over time, and again, 20 years is, is quite a bit of time.
Vicki, when I go through my packet, I only see one, one bid. Is there only one bid here?
There is. There was a question that was asked earlier today. The company that we're proposing is West Georgia Lighting Design and Services. They really have been probably the company that has been the most responsive as it relates to a lot of our lighting and electrical needs, especially on our, more of our high voltage type of work, or, especially on our ball fields, you know. Typically, I would bring to you bids where, you know, we've put everything out, in this particular case, this company has just been the most responsive anytime we have called to have quotes done. In many instances, they may have been the only one that has shown up, so a lot of times on a lighting issue that we try to seek to get addressed rather quickly, they're just have been the most responsive, quite honestly.
I think I can certainly relate to that, I, you know, I'm often in, in business, we, we give that a greater weight, but we have expressed that we want to see three bids, and I think even if you come in and say what you just said, which is that, hey, we, I want to go with these people because of the relationship we have, all these various things, I can do that. I think I still would like to see three bids so that I know that I'm actually looking at comparable pricing.
Sure.
And how soon do you need this to be approved?
Well, we can't take.
I mean, if we tabled this and got two more bids, would that be, would that be a safety issue?
Let me just say, we can take a little bit more time with this, I, I will say we're going into the winter time, so people maybe aren't playing as much, so, it, it's not going to be a problem, and I think probably, maybe by next month, well, it'd be January probably more than likely.
Let me say, I respect that, what you're saying about the relationship, I do, but I, I think I would like to at least see two more bids so that I can be comfortable with, with how I spend taxpayer dollars. So, for me, unless anybody has any other questions, I would be, I would like to table this until, when would you like to do it?
Let me, let me, before you get that, that answer, let me just say, as, as far as the timetable is concerned, if you do wait until January, you're, you're dealing with, with, you're going to have to put those heavy trucks on, on the dirt back behind there to get those poles up, the ones that are down there, you're going to tear that area up. Most of the time, when you replace poles, you do it in the summertime, when it's hard, you don't do it in the winter, so.
We're talking about taking it to the next meeting. Aren't we talking about the next meeting, aren't you going to have some bids by then?
Well, to be on the safe side, for me to go ahead and, and if I were to try to put this out, it would just take a little bit more time. The next meeting is in two weeks, so I wouldn't be able.
Two days.
Yeah, I wouldn't be able to, I can't make that promise.
There ain't any type of way that we can even see that they're in the ballpark, because I kind of agree, but I don't want it to be a pain in the neck, just like we, we like to shop local, right, and we use Ford, but if for some reason their bid is, you know, not just a little bit above, but a lot above, we tend to go elsewhere, but we try to use local whenever we can, especially if they've taken care of stuff for us.
Well, if we should ideally be doing this in the summer, is that what you said?
Well, I mean, you just, when you're dealing with situations like this, when you get those big heavy line trucks off the pavement, it's going to tear the ground up, so that's why you do it in the summertime. This is still, I mean, right now it's raining, so it's a bad time to say this, but typically right now would still be an acceptable time to do that.
Right now through, let's say, when?
Through the end of March.
And how soon are these new poles going to be up? I mean, how bad off are the old poles?
Well, I mean, the answer to the question is, nobody, none of us know how bad those poles are. If the poles break off tomorrow in the wind, then we should have done it today.
So, nobody's inspected the poles, in other words.
Nobody's inspected those poles, and I know that they're, they're at least, they've been, I know they've been there since 2001.
What is the timeframe for installation if this were to be approved tonight?
Well, quite honestly, I was trying to get them scheduled pretty quickly. A lot of it's going to be contingent upon rain, because we, we have been in a, a period of rain as of late, so, to the point that he's making in terms of being able to have the ground be steady enough, you're bringing in heavy equipment, so, that certainly is a factor, you know, I would say, and again, I can attempt to commit to a time, but part of, what the challenge has been is when we set days up and we've asked people to come out for quotes, it's the, there, a lot of them are the no-shows, so.
Have you replaced any poles since you've been here?
I have not replaced any poles since I've been here, so we're preparing, just so that you understand, not just this item, but there was another item in the, in the budget to replace poles as well. I just realized that I ended up moving this one, I was going to try to move that next set, you know, as part of the next.
Is Goldust the only place where we had to replace poles, or is any of the other places?
There, what's in the budget now, I'd have to go back and check, but all of Goldust was, we were preparing to do that within this budget.
How about the poles at the other locations, like V-Plux, stuff like that?
Most of the, if not all the poles, V-Plux are concrete, if that's all I can remember.
If you're going to replace even more poles, wouldn't we want to get a bid that covered all of that?
Well, we did get the initial, these were all priced out together, and I'll just say, it's, it's my error, I put this one on and then didn't realize I should have moved that one. My goal was to mobilize them at one time, quite honestly, so.
So, if I tabled this tonight, if I, if, if we tabled this tonight, would you, is is that what you would do at the next meeting, bring them all together?
The next meeting would be bringing the next set of, the pricing for the next set of poles, yes, but in terms of me being able to get other quotes, that's what-
Not sure.
-the challenge, yes.
I'm confused, did they get quoted together or they didn't? I got lost somewhere in that.
These were quoted some time ago, as part of even the budget, we started putting together pricing to include as part of, uh, the 2019 budget, so pricing and estimates we really already knew, we've known for some time.
But she's saying if she has to get additional quotes, because I asked for two more for these, then she would presumably need them for those two, otherwise I'd be saying the same thing.
How many poles are we talking about all together?
I'd have to go back and look at my other, uh, because we have some existing poles at, um, at V-plex that we can use for, um, our ball fields, so I believe it may be four new ones, and then we use those two, I'd have to just go back and double check what's on the, what's on the paper.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, table this to our next meeting, and then we'll see where we're at there, if it passes.
I'll second that, I think-
Motion to second to table this to the next meeting, all in favor? All, okay, it is unanimous. Item number two.
This, uh, second item, this is a request to purchase, uh, John Deere bunker and field rake, um, this also was included as part, um, of the two thousand nineteen budget, the price is thirteen thousand one hundred sixty-one dollars and seventy-two cents, um, this is, this will replace one of our older pieces of, uh, equipment, it's pretty much the exact same model, I will tell you, um, just to kind of answer questions that I'm anticipating, we're purchasing this off of state contract, I will let you know that this falls under the, um, golf equipment category of John Deere, so they are set up and authorized, have authorized dealers in, in territories, if you will, so this is coming from the authorized dealer, um, and also it's a purchase on state contract.
Uh, this was, this is a different category, and I don't have the same, uh, concerns about that here, so, uh, I'll just say that upfront.
I skimmed over that email with the answer, didn't totally catch that, because usually, John Deere's just more expensive, usually, so, and I, I'm used to getting stuff from Public Works with the comparison between different choices or bids, so it's because it's a state bid makes it okay, or?
Well-
I mean, not a state bid, state-
Let me just say this, if we took it off government contract and I called the local John Deere, he's gonna say, I cannot sell you that, because I did call, just so that, it's like, I cannot sell you that, I can tell you who the authorized dealer is for that particular piece of equipment, and that's basically how I was directed, um, you know, I guess they're just set up in territories to sell, so, um, and that designated person actually is for the entire state, so, um, that's how that ended up working out, but also, this is the government price for the piece of equipment, because I actually reached out and I called the state purchasing office as well, so talked to the state purchasing office, and I talked to a local authorized dealer.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I don't have a problem with this, now I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, let me make it first. To, to approve the purchase of a bunker and field rake through John Deere governmental on Georgia State contract for the amount of thirteen thousand one hundred sixty-one dollars and seventy-two cents.
Second.
A motion to second, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, can I interject here, um, on the budget amendment that we were talking about a moment ago that you tabled, the only problem, as I understand it, was that the code section was not filled in, that code section is two dash seventy-one, if you have any interest in revisiting that here tonight.
Is that the only holdup? If it is, let's get it done.
I think that was it, so, you want to back up?
Well, and the fact that there was no, uh, motion, uh, attached to the cover sheet that completed it, uh, but I have no problem revisiting that tonight.
Get it done.
Do I have a motion that we revisit?
Second.
Motion to second to revisit item number-
Six.
B six.
Bingo. B six. Okay, now, uh, all in favor?
We don't have an ordinance number on here. Do we need, do we need, oh, for moving, for going back, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, it is unanimous, now.
I'm not aware that we have been attaching ordinance numbers to any of our ordinances.
Okay, so we're not required-
He's suggesting that because it has a blank, that probably should be.
Yeah, the blank should be filled in with two dash seven one.
That would be pursuant to section two dash seven one, okay.
I'll make a motion, David, if you'll read off, an appropriate motion.
Okay, let me get to it. Uh, the motion would be to approve the amendment to the budget for the fiscal year twenty nineteen for the city pursuant to section two dash seventy-one of the city charter as presented to the council.
That's my motion.
Second.
Have a motion to second, all in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
You're so good, sir, you're good.
Chief, you're on, beat that.
I hope you're not wanting more money, you got plenty tonight, so you can have your money.
So, what I'm presenting, is that too loud? So, what I'm presenting is radios, back up. Uh, I'm asking for radios for the police department, portable radios, uh, to basically start changing out these because these are, uh, getting older and we're having a lot of issues with them, uh, Motorola is no longer servicing these, so once they break, they're of no use to us because they're not gonna repair them, so we're asking to purchase them increments at a time, not all at once, obviously, because of the cost, uh, and, uh, we're basically doing ten a year, and, uh, the total was twenty-nine thousand and a little bit more. And Motorola is the only company we can get them from because they won't work on the eight hundred megahertz, so it's the sole provider.
Did, didn't we budget this? We, we've had this discussion before, is this in the budget?
Yes, sir, we budgeted it every year, to, you know-
Did you do this cover sheet?
Well, I mean, we, we do, I'm sorry.
Did you do this cover sheet?
I did not.
Okay.
Let me make a motion, that we allow the police department to purchase ten APX four thousand radios from Motorola Solutions for the amount of twenty-nine thousand fifteen dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
Second, yeah.
Have a motion to second, any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous.
Chief, a couple of things come out of the meeting while you're up here today, one of the things, and it involves radios, are we still working toward, toward being able to communicate with other jurisdictions?
Yes.
Right now, as I understand it, if you're in a, having a bit in a police chase with the city of Douglasville, and y'all are side by side, you can't communicate.
We send smoke signals to each other. Uh, I mean, honestly, the last chase we got in that I was actually involved in with the guy that rammed us, we were on the cell phone talking to dispatch because our radios don't reach.
So, does it, does this help that situation at all?
This, this does not, now, Douglas County is adding an eight hundred megahertz that is gonna hopefully be in by next year, and we're gonna be allowed to, to work with them on that, so yes, sir, that will.
Good.
Any other questions? All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tab E, Tom, unless you really mess up. We're doing pretty good.
This is a cleanup item from Douglas County, we have an agreement with the county for the collect, the billing and collection of property tax, that agreement calls for the city to pay the county four dollars per bill, and it spec, and the co, agreement specifies that when the county receives that four dollars, that they keep two of it and remit two to the tax commissioner. The tax commissioner has requested that the agreement be modified, there's, there's two years left, uh, probably nineteen and twenty remain, or remaining, and he has asked that the agreement be changed so that we remit two checks, a two dollar per bill check to the county and a two dollar per bill check to the tax commissioner.
Let me, let me just ask you a question, is your mic on? I don't think it is.
Your mic.
And while I can hear you at home, yeah, there's a difference, the, the light, it needs to be bright, not just green, touch it again.
It's green when it has power, but it's bright green when it's on.
That's much brighter.
That's bright green.
It's actually lit up now.
So, the cost to the city of Billerica is not changing, how it gets dispersed is changing, we will send two dollars to the commissioner and two dollars to the county, as opposed to sending four dollars to the county and them sending two dollars to the commissioner, he's cut out the middleman, he wants to get a check directly from us.
That's it.
Ms. Shirley says it's just a check and a stamp. I move that we approve, approve the amended agreement with Douglas County for the collection of property taxes effective January one, two thousand nineteen.
Have a motion to second, all in favor?
Oh, no discussion?
Well, I was gonna-
You want some discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It, I just, I wanted to make a comment because I couldn't help myself, um, just as a teachable moment in Georgia state law, just like they make us have three weeks of early voting for one council seat and what that costs us as a city, just tuck this in the back of your mind, this two dollars that goes to the tax commissioner, okay, so we've been sending them four, we're now gonna divide it up where two goes to the county and two goes, it goes directly in the county commissioner's pocket for every bill, and just that I know it's been you, this has been abused and it's been in the AJC some years ago by a tax commissioner, so just know that, it doesn't go their department, it goes in their pocket to them personally.
How many bills are we talking about here for every bill?
How many bills we got?
And that's just not Douglas County, so we're clear on that.
No, this is, no, this is all over the state.
Do you know?
It's eight grand. Couple, couple of thousand.
But that's not up to us, I, I, that's just, I guess-
It's not, but it's a teachable moment because we do, we are, we have representatives that represent us at the state level who these laws are put in under, so we need to know these sort of things in case we ever want to consider changing them.
Good point.
And another point that you might be interested in considering is that this is half the rate we pay Carroll County.
That's interesting.
Now, that's interesting.
That's really interesting.
When is that agreement up for review?
I don't, it, that agreement doesn't specify- It doesn't specify how much goes to the county and how much goes to the commissioner, does it? How, what is it?
So, so who, why is it different? I mean, who dictates what the number is?
That's by negotiation, right?
It's, it's an agreement that the two governments enter into.
Yeah, the, the alternative is to do it ourselves, so, I mean, we, we have the option of collecting, collecting it ourselves.
Or to see if they'll do it for less, or hey, can you match that county?
Do we have any idea what that would cost us?
Cards to play, we don't have any choice.
It must not be very good because nobody knows.
We'll, we'll give you some more detail on that next time because we don't have those on top of our head. That's it, I mean.
That's the whole city manager report? Wow.
We haven't done that yet.
I'm gonna do a manager's report next time.
No, that wasn't a report, that was-
We haven't voted on this agreement yet.
Yeah, we gotta vote on this agreement, your motion?
Yeah.
We've got first and second.
Y'all did the motion in the second.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous. City manager's report.
That's right, we stopped for her discussion, didn't we?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do manager report in the second meeting, plus we just did two, two big presentations the last two meetings, so.
Seven twenty-three.
Not that much new.
Okay, David, we have executive session.
There's one on here for, uh, purchasing property, but I'm not-
Yeah, I, I'm not ready to do it, so we can do that next time.
I make a motion that we remove the executive session from the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion to second to remove the executive session item, all in favor? It is removed.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion to second to adjourn, all in favor? It is unanimous, wow.
Seven twenty-four.